Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together today. We thank you for the many blessings you have given this college and to each of us. We also thank you for the blessing of Dean Goel. We wish him the best of his retirement. Please continue to bless him and guide him in his life and fill him with the riches that he has filled this college with during his tenure here as our initial dean of the College of Technology and Management. And, Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting today. Please guide us as we conduct our business. And please help and guide our students, our administrators, our faculty, our career employees here at the college who make all the operations here run. Please help us as we continue to do your work, and we ask for your many blessings. And thank you for all you do for us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and thank you all very much for being with us this morning. Appreciate your presence. We have a little bit of a different -- a couple of adjustments to our agenda. I had spoken with Dr. Law about maybe moving a few little things around, and so we have a little different format this morning. And so we're going to start it off just to see if there are any comments from board members that have anything that anyone wants to bring up at this point. Hearing none. Dr. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Couple of quick announcements, and then I have a more formal report at the end. Saturday is summer graduation, so everybody is, I think, has been contacted. Kim is quite dutiful in getting all that done. I just want to be sure everybody that I highlight that. Did want to give some recognition to Dennis Jones. We're glad Dennis is here today, and -- but Dennis has been named to the transition team for Senate President Herodopoulos. And as all of us realize, that's serious business. The new president of the Senate only has two years to get things done, so the transition matters a great deal, and we're very proud of Dennis's work on that. Jim Oliver has asked me to pass around just a save-the-date card for his habitat park. Will be out at Seminole with your approval today, next board meeting. I think the August board meeting is going to be out there, and we can keep an eye on how that is moving. Let me take one more minute, if I could, just on agenda changes. The two things you will see today is the inclusion of short presentations by each of the provosts or site directors to present one key idea or just a flavor of what's happening on each of the sites. We're calling, in light of what we see on TV where America has talent, we have -- the provosts have talent. So you get to vote on each one as they come by. Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, I have included, and I'm really pleased with reviewing the first one, but I'd like to, each month, provide a little more insight from the chief financial officer. I'd like Doug Duncan every month to both present the financials and then share with you items that he is either reviewing or working on, where are we putting our attention, respond to any questions you might have, but just give our financial progress a little more visibility with the board and see if that doesn't help us. We're headed to some difficult times again, so the more we all know together, the better we'll be served. So those are the changes for now, and I think I'll recommend some later in the fall, but right now, if we can just get those. I see Mr. Burke.
Will we get -- on the financials, will we get something in advance of the presentation?
We will. This one, we were working right up until yesterday to be sure we knew what we wanted, and with the June 30 closing, so today we'll do that. But yes, you will get that in advance.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. We have a retirement resolution.
Dean Goel, if you'll come forward. I know there are a number of people who want to stand next to you, so -- and your family. I saw your lovely wife. Yes. My goodness, look at all those folks.
And, Dr. Law, can we invite Tom up here?
We certainly can. Tom Furlong, that would be a great thing, okay?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Can -- is there anybody we can rescind in this retirement?
You want to make the motion?
We just don't accept it.
Here, stand over here. Sri, why don't you come on this side here? Okay, so you stand over here. All right. My goodness, this is so wonderful. Okay, Dr. Sri Goel was the founding dean of the College of Technology and Management at St. Petersburg College. He arrived in 2002 and developed a technology management program with little more than 100 students and two full-time faculty members. The initial majors have grown to encompass six bachelor's degree programs: technology management, international business, banking, management and organization leadership, sustainability management, business administration. Enrollment for fall 2010 is expected to approach 1,300 students. And while Sri worked with his faculty to develop many courses that could be shared across majors, five SPC bachelor's programs outside the College of Technology and Management use many of the CTM courses as electives or core classes in their own programs. And while Sri introduced new technologies in our programs, as an engineer using cutting-edge technology and implementing continuous improvement of our programs, he was always at the forefront of his leadership. Sri established strong advisory boards to help guide the programs. The board members were involved in many aspects of the programs, including the Capstone Award. Sri developed a CTM chapter of the SPC Alumni Association in 2009 for our graduates to network with other management and technology professionals. Sri has guided external articulation agreements with Hillsborough Community College, Santa Fe Community College, and Pasco Hernando Community College for their lower-division programs, and with USF St. Petersburg for their MBA program. In addition, we have an agreement for collaboration with Tallinn University of Technology in Estonia and St. Petersburg State University in Russia. In the banking program, he helped establish an articulation agreement with Florida School of Banking. And while Sri is a visionary individual, he used his skills and knowledge to rapidly grow the baccalaureate programs in the College of Technology and Management and enhance the lives of many students in Florida and beyond, now therefore be it resolved that St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Sri Goel, and to extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment through the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 22nd day of July 2010. Dean Goel.
Well, thank you very much. This is certainly a very humbling experience for me. This is my second retirement, and just hearing what I heard, I have one more week left. Looks like I'll have to work very hard to earn all this now. But truly, friends, it has been an unusual experience for me to work with some very outstanding people, because when I came here, I was not completely in tune with the education system. So thank you all for giving me all the support. We really had a wonderful team here, and I think I can say that the best part of our job was that we had a lot of fun. And I can say for me personally, the best part of my job has been to be able to work with these students and make some positive contribution in their lives, raising their, you know, career aspirations and goals. So it has been fun. Now, looking ahead, I was looking at my crystal ball this morning, and I see a lot of very wonderful things coming for SPC. I see a very bright future. I'll miss being a part of this action, but nevertheless, I can tell you that from the side, I'll be certainly enjoying and relishing all the success that you'll be getting. So I'll be around, and I'll certainly appreciate you giving me this lifetime opportunity of working here. So, thank you.
Well, Tom and I were a team with -- and we worked with Sri, and Sri really provided the leadership, and he was the anchor for our program. And he had such a vision for how technology should be used in the classroom and how he should collaborate with businesses, and he's really established a strong program with a strong advisory board. And even when we started -- and of course, he's built an empire, as you can see. And even when we started out with those 100 students, he and Viva, his wife Viva, who is a strong supporter of the program, invited those graduates to their house. They had a nice little reception for them. They've continued to open their home to international visitors. When we've had teams from Estonia that have come, students and faculty members, they are just involved in so many aspects. Sri interviews every student when they graduate just to get feedback, and he continually challenges us to keep changing and improving, and everybody's smiling because they're going to take a deep breath when Sri leaves. But we really appreciate everything that you've done, Sri, and we'll miss him, but he's left the program in a great state, and we look forward to moving ahead, but we'll miss him.
Thanks. Kate kind of said it all, but it's kind of symbolic of the growth of the bachelor programs. My first day of work was 2001, and the only person sitting around the office was Sri. And he was doing a little consulting contract, and somebody said, "He's an expert in artificial intelligence." And he came in, and we hired him, and he said, "What do I do?" There was no staff, there was no desk. He sat outside my office, and, you know, this is like, you know, less than 10 years later, and look at this kingdom, Sri. Great job. We couldn't have done it without you. Yeah. Sorry, didn't get a chance to meet you, but.
We'll take a picture here. Hang on. Sri, come on over. Terry, you're in.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if we don't approve the resolution, that means we have to stay?
You can't leave. You can't leave. Okay, we need a motion to accept that or approve that. Pardon me. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Law, any other recognitions or announcements?
No, sir. None now.
Okay. Item 3C, our July meeting, as all of us are aware, by Florida statute, is our organizational meeting where we will elect officers and make some other decisions relative to our regular meetings. We had a brief discussion about this at our last meeting. So pursuant to Section 1001.61 of the Florida statutes, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2010-2011 fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, before we make a motion, I've been thinking about Mr. Burke's comments about who's going to be left and who's going to be here and who can do a job, and I'm just thinking back to 1999. You served one year as chair. It's conceivable you could serve another one, but it's also very conceivable, in my mind, that you could serve two more after that, because if we ended up with a whole new board, you would be saddled in the chair for four years. And I know you had acquiesced that if we wanted you would do that. I'm not sure that's in your best interest, because you do have a business to run and a family. To be tied up in the chair for four years, not that it's a bad job, but I'm sure this last year has been kind of hard on you. And I wanted to make that comment before we moved forward. As I said, I think highly of Mr. Burke, and he is our vice chair, and I just want to see you saddled with what I see could happen as being a chair for four continuous years. And the more I thought about it, the more I just wanted to speak to that subject before we even got started, because I can see that happening, because you'll be one of the senior people who've been in the chair, and it's only natural that new parties are going to step in and say, "Well, we're going to turn to you," and you may not want to have that. So with that consideration, I would like to see us just reverse our roles, you as the vice chairman and Mr. Burke as the chairman for the forthcoming year.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Discussion. Mr. Burke?
Terry, and obviously, I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking. On your term, did the Senate approve -- is he the only -- I know Evelyn and I, our term was approved by the Senate, but we go off in May of next year unless there's a reappointment. Did the Senate take action on your appointment, so you are definitely?
Yes.
Good. Okay. That's good to hear.
Someone's got to be here.
Well, a lot of times, they don't, remember? And that's what happened in '99, since the Senate didn't take action, that's how Governor Bush was able to -- and I, you know, and sometimes those appointments get, and it's a year later when they take action, or a year and a half later when they take action. So I wasn't sure if that happened. Okay? That's good.
Thank you, Senator Jones.
Is it true, I heard that, I mean, Governor Chris isn't going to make any appointments?
That's the way I was looking.
I don't think anybody knows.
Well, I heard that from --
You heard it too.
-- the individual who runs our -- Will Holcomb, that runs the community college system, he told me that Charlie was not going to make any more appointments. And I think if he even made one in a special session, the way that special sessions are running, the Senate probably wouldn't even take him up, or might turn him down.
Has to be part of the call.
And in fairness to the governor, I think that's, you know, whoever he appoints is in no man's land. You know, they're not, you know, they -- it's not like a Republican governor coming after him would say, "Oh, those are good Republican appointments. I'm going to go with them," or the other party would come in. It's like, it's almost a disadvantage if he does select anyone, because they would have a target on them. So I think it's, that's, I think it -- it is, I mean, I think part of this discussion, why I think we're talking about this, because there is indecision as to where we're going to be a year from now on this board, you know? So I think there does need to be some planning as far as that. That's why I'm suggesting Mr. Brett staying on as chair for another year and me staying as vice chair, just so we would know that we would have a chair for the entire year. But that's just, you know, I'm fine with whatever. I think we've worked so collaboratively as a board, not that the chair doesn't do more, they certainly do, Terry, I'm not minimizing that, but this is a, this is not a, this is a very congenial board as far as working together. So it's not like there's, it's, but I, you know what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying, and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Kevin.
Are you declining, or are you accepting the nomination?
I'll do whatever. I mean, it's.
Because I think you're right. I think we don't know what the heck's going to happen, and it'll be November before the new governor decides on what happens on these two seats, and I would imagine that if you guys are up, that new governor will decide probably fairly quickly, and so you may or may not get a full year, so.
As I said at our last meeting, I am happy to continue on as chair. However, I think my first preference would be to have Mr. Burke as vice chair move into the chair's position and hopefully serve out a whole year. And I'm happy to serve as vice chair, if that's the pleasure of this board, and if something happens where your reappointment doesn't occur, I can move in at that point. But I think that you deserve to be here, and unless you, for whatever reason, prefer not to, that would be my preference. I think that's, I think that's the fairest thing. So I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is. Any other discussion?
Well, I was concerned about you, Terry, having to serve for four straight years.
Well, the nomination that we have, the nomination, or the motion and second we have on the floor right now would make that go away, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Because the motion on the floor is?
Is the nomination.
The nomination on the floor.
And the second.
And the second.
Now, with the nominations.
The nomination for?
If you need to call for it, you can call for it by acclamation.
Well, Deborah has something to say.
I would, Ken, do you want to be the chair and not have to serve?
It's fine if we just do what we do this year.
It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter. Well, you know, I want what's best for the college.
I don't think, I don't think we lose either way. You're both committed to this board and to this college, and we won't lose either way, so.
Am I right? The motion is for Ken to serve as chair. I'm confused now.
I haven't made a motion, so. Yeah, the motion is for Ken.
I made the motion for Ken.
Okay. And we have a second?
I second.
Okay. And you'd be vice chair.
Okay. Well, I think we need to, we need to deal with the chair first, and then I, and then I.
We can do it as one motion, though.
We can. Okay. Very good. Okay. So just to reiterate, the motion and second is for Mr. Burke to move into the chair's position, for myself to move to vice chair. Correct? Is that what we're?
That's, that's the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Beautiful. Okay.
I guess my first act as chair is to thank you, Terry. You know, we've talked about this during the year. It's been a tough year for the college. Anytime you have a transition, it's a tough year. So I mean, in any college. But no one could have handled it more ably than you did this past year, Terry. I certainly appreciate all you've given to the role. We all do. Everyone in this room appreciates what you've done as chair.
Okay. Switch seats now.
Yeah, we'll just stay in the same seats for a -- No, no, my computer's set up here. I'll just take the guy off.
Mr. Chair, can I be recognized for a comment?
Yes, Deborah. Thanks.
You know, you can know someone for a very long time and not know what they're made of. Terry Brett has been one of my closest friends for probably the last 10, 10 years, Terry? And you really know, I knew what he was made of, let me just say that, but over this past year, you really proved to me and a lot of other people that your integrity can never be questioned. And I really appreciate this year that you've served as chair. I think the process that we went through was a very tough one. I think some of the criticism that a lot of people on this board took was not warranted, but we did what we did the right way, and we had a leader that kept insisting that if the process was fair, and if the process was clean, that we all could live with it in the community and the college could live with it. And I appreciate you for that, and I appreciate what you've done for this college, and you brought us a great man as a leader moving forward. And I think the impact of your year as chair will be seen for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just follow up. I know, Terry, some experiences, maybe the rest of them don't know, that you've had a difficult year. Things haven't probably worked out personally for you like that you might have wanted them to, but you certainly stood by your integrity, and that's what we're all talking about. And you've done an excellent job for this college, and I just want to say thank you. And I'm sure a lot of people in the audience want to say thank you, too, because you carried us through a very difficult time, and you had an even hand, calm leadership. You let us go ahead and all of the four of us go and go in our direction, but you gave us the guidance that we needed to get through this situation. And I know anytime you change a president that's been around as long as Dr. Cutler had, it has to be a hard job. It has to be a hard job to keep your hand on the throttle and keep everything running smoothly. And I've seen your hands through all this, so I just appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I haven't known you, maybe I have known you 10 years. I'm not sure how long I've known you, but I know you did come to my 70th birthday party.
Well, that was 20 years ago. I say back everything I say.
Terry, I just want to thank you for your service. I know it was very difficult, but being on the sidelines, it was very difficult for me, and I want to thank you for your service, and you did a great job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very nice comments, Terry, and very, very well deserved.
Thank you, Ken.
And I want to say something beyond, Terry, on this board. You know, this, you think about this past year, there was lots of pressures on each one of us to tug us in different directions, and we weathered the storm pretty well as a board. And, you know, we've always tried to be as congenial as can be with each other, and I think we've accomplished that, too. I don't think there's, and so I think that's a tremendous accomplishment in the course of a year where we were pulled in so many different directions as a board that we sit here today, that we all like each other, we respect each other, and enjoy working with each other. And so that's a tribute to you, too, Terry, for making that happen, and I say thank you for that.
Great. Thank you.
Let's move on with the agenda here. The selection of a day for regular monthly board meeting. I would like to entertain a motion that we have our board meetings the third Tuesday each month to be held at the epicenter meeting room.
Second?
It is third Tuesday, right?
I guess. Press that one to say something.
Excuse me. Is that the, Sid, is that the correct day? Is that our usual? Third. I just want to make sure I got that right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we had, I think, with some general guidance earlier, there are a couple of change, the general motion is, of course, third Tuesday. There were a couple of suggested changes, and I would like to engage a little bit of guidance on moving to other sites. So we've developed a preliminary look.
Very good.
If you'll just, here's the dilemma. We know we want to get out to the sites, those apparently, they always engender great enthusiasm. With seven sites now, we'll literally be moving around almost every month. So maybe what we could have is an every other year, where we split that over two years to get to the sites, just so that we can, this room is better when we're doing budget development and some of those. And then I think there was a notion that in October, we were going to move to the board meeting. I think it conflicts with ACCT or one of those.
Yes, it does.
But that's just my input for completion, so we can post the record in a public place.
Sid, I thought in previous years, and maybe I was wrong on this, I thought we approved this site as our regular meeting site, and then we have special motions to approve of
-- But you could also do that.
Do that here?
You could do that here.
All here?
I gather you've already moved to set the regular schedule, and then you can take your appropriate action.
As a second, as a second motion, or pardon? Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that has always, what you just commented, has always been convenient. We can change within a, what, a two-week period or whatever the timeframe is. We have set this as a primary place, and then deviated when we needed to to go elsewhere.
Is there a motion? I asked a motion to be made. Is there a motion to that effect about a regular meeting?
I'll make the motion that a regular meeting, subject to any changes we wish to make, were made right here at this room, and at the proper time at 8:30, too, I guess.
The third Tuesday of the month?
Right.
A second.
Motion's been made and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, if we wish, we can approve this as a schedule of meeting locations. Is there a motion to that effect?
I sum it.
By Mrs. Bill Arakis?
Second.
Brett seconded it. Any discussion on this point?
Can you give us a chance to look at it?
Sure. I think the Seminole campus one's already been approved.
Yeah.
And we always have to go for Christmas at St. Pete's Kids.
Sure. I think the Seminole campus one's already been approved.
Yeah.
And we always have to go for Christmas at St. Pete's Kids.
I understand that, so. I've been so informed.
Yeah. I think we're going to have it on that Monday, but we can do that at next meeting or September meeting.
Okay. We can work. We'll be back for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
How about, I don't know on this designation of, can you help me with that one, Dr. Law?
I think with, with this morning's vote, why don't we move that for a month and let me do a little background work, okay? I think we're anticipating different roles, and if you'll just postpone that, we'll bring it back in a, let me touch base.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. McKenzie.
You're also technically under the rule supposed to set the time for the regular and the monthly meetings?
I did.
Dick mentioned that in his motion. In his motion, he had 8:30.
Mr. Johnston did, it was part of his.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
8:30. Well, I knew that, but I figured he'd tell me that.
And item D, and that's the appointments to our other boards.
Well, I would like to personally just continue to serve on the foundation board, if that would be okay with everybody here.
That's, and Evelyn, would you stand the lead?
Yeah, I guess so, sure.
And Ken, you have been on the Alumni Association so long, we'll probably have to name it after you.
So is that fine with everyone? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
By Mr. Brett, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded by, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And so I guess this concludes our annual meeting. Have we conducted all the business necessary there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's move on with the regular agenda now, and are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Prove approval.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Lang, it's good to have you with us. Do you have any report today?
No report today. It was quiet on the.
That's very good to hear. Mr. McKenzie, do you have a report? And I know you were approving later on a new attorney for your office. If you care, tell us about that person.
Yeah, we have added Suzanne Berry. She comes from a private practice background, doing a lot of contracts and construction. She'll fit in perfectly. We missed Brian Fettig, but she will fill that role, and is already filling that role and doing an excellent job. Glad to have her.
Great. Which firm was she with, Sid?
She was not with a firm, she was with a corporate entity.
Okay.
Sid, is she here today that we could?
She is not here. She's off doing a project for me.
Thank you for those reports. We have a new aspect to our meeting, and Dr. Law will take over this part. The provosts, I think, are prepared. They're each, my guidance was each has three minutes to present whatever ideas they want. I've not pre-screened these. You're welcome, of course, to extend that by your questions. We hope you will, but I've tried to give them guidance. We have to get through everybody in a timely basis, so we hope that you'll learn something about each of our sites over the course of the year. Conflit, do I understand you're going first? Oh, I'm sorry, JC?
No.
No, 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 not me. Let's go, now's time.
Am I first?
No.
Well, don't you guys.
The closest American Idol I will ever be. I think more of the Gong Show. I'm not going to dance, and you don't want to hear me sing, so I'll just give you the report that's prepared. I would assume that we click this and go forward. It's a bad assumption. We frequently entertain folks at the Allstate Center, both from within the college and outside, and one of the things that is very common is, boy, I didn't realize you did that, or I didn't realize you had this, and, boy, you're different. I want to leave you today with one thought, that we are different, but we're very much the same. Our focus, of course, is first with our academic programs, and we have a significant enrollment of 4,500 students with both the associates and I have the privilege of managing the bachelor program from our site. That's under the control of Kay Berniston, of course, but we have a great relationship between Dean Brian Frank overseeing that program and working with Kay. The growth has been substantial, 12% in the lower division over the past five years and 37% in the upper division, which has been a sustained continual growth. We're very proud of that we have four major programs in our associates programs and seven or eight subplans of certificates. Our second major area of our four-pronged approach down at Allstate is your academies. That is four and a many people, but that's 420 people that we infused into the workforce last year of our workforce development programs. Post-secondary adult vocational is a formal name within the state system. We are the only PSAV programs in the college. We survived a significant economic downturn with positive revenue expense ratio, have a very small staff and support it primarily with adjuncts. Happy to say had a 98% pass rate on a Florida officer exam over the past year and received a perfect audit from the Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission, and that's something that's pretty difficult to do. That includes our corrections firefighter and law enforcement programs that many of you are familiar with. Our in-service continuing education workforce program is the third prong, where we served last year about 14,000 students, provided three to 400 seminars in a wide variety of areas from A to Z, animal control to zoom lens photography. So this is a self-sustaining program, had some serious challenges with the economic downturn, but again, pretty positive revenue to expense ratio. We have the challenge in front of us of having to fund the programs at 100% as of July 1, based on a new law passed that we are all handling throughout the college for continuing workforce programs. We're making those adjustments and feel confident we'll be able to handle that appropriately. And then probably one of the higher-profile components of our program at Allstate are the grants and contracts. Pretty substantial, $150 million over the past 18 years. We will receive no federal earmarks in 2011, which is a significant challenge to us. We will be at the lowest funding level since 1995, FY of '11 of about $2.3, $2.5 million. Will we be able to sustain ourselves without any further funding through 2012 and anticipate acquiring additional funding? Under Dr. Law's leadership, we have began a series of outreach programs with our various lawmakers and folks who we feel can assist us in those endeavors, and I'm sure at some point, we will come back to you with a more detailed report as to what we are doing in that regard. That's just an overview. It's, I know you sit here before us, you see a lot of paperwork comes to you, but if you do not clearly understand, I want you to believe that the academic focus is a critical part of what we do, and we really are more common than we are different from the rest of the college. So I'm trying to erase that you're very different mentality. Question, sir?
Question. I see up here that you said no federal earmarks for the year 2011.
One extra zero in the, sorry, 2011.
Okay. But that, no federal earmarks, is, is there a reason for that?
It was a decision that was made by the Republican leadership not to seek federal earmarks across the board, and of course, we've been very reliant on Congressman Young, been very good to us over the past 15, 18 years, and so it put us in a little bit of a dire strait in early March when we received that information. We had submitted those requests through Congressman Young's office of about $11 million in federal requests, hoping to get seven or eight, which has been the standard over the past five or six years, but the decision was made, they would not seek it. We quickly began a series of activities to try to revive these opportunities with other lawmakers, but it was a bit tardy, so now we're meeting face-to-face with a wide variety. Dennis Jones has been very integral in assisting us, along with Janet Law and Dr. Law, and we have a series of visits scheduled and presentations to inform other lawmakers of our capabilities.
Okay, so you are pursuing those for the following years?
Very much so.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
How about, it's the same type of question, Dick, but a little different direction, because we're approving a lot of grant requests for Allstate right now in this, at this board meeting. So what's the, how the total funding we've traditionally received, how much is grant funding and how much is earmark? You said seven and a half million, I think you said, for earmark? Is that what we've traditionally received?
Recently, yes, sir. And our goal is to reach about a 50% competitive grant versus earmarks. Last numbers were about 26%, 28%, which is positive, not where we want to be of competitive grants. You have several before you today, I think about $3 million that we're competing for. We will continue to do that, and of our total, we're managing about $18 million right now of multiple-year funding, and about 25%, 26% of that is competitive. The others were earmarks. Certainly, we would like to have more competitive, and we're pursuing that.
And I was under the impression that the congressman's office was trying to help us with some of the formerly earmark money to be put into the budget as a regular item. Has progress been made, or is that what you're talking about, the effort, and so far, it's just an effort and not any resolution?
Exactly. We're seeking to get a budgeted line item, so that we not have to be dependent upon annual earmarks. We were at one time in the federal budget. That has gone by the wayside over the past three years, and that's our goal, to get in a budget, whether it's Homeland Security, Southern Command, SouthCom, something that would give us some sustainability.
And is there hope in that area?
Yes, there is.
You're saying there is? I mean, that's a realistic thing?
I believe it is in the future, not for FY '11. I think it's going to be a real challenge. We're hopeful, but not confident for FY '11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to share with you this morning about four specialized, what I refer to as specialized academic programs that we're offering on the Topon Springs campus. Two of those are relatively new to the Topon Springs campus, and all four of those are ones that I've been working very closely, and that's the reason I want to talk to you about it. The first is the Summer Success. We offer this program at the Topon Springs campus for the first time this summer. This program reaches out to economically disadvantaged students, as well as first-generation and college students. And we, within three weeks of knowing that we had funding for this program, we were able to market and actually recruit 21 programs. We did that, 21 students, I should say. We did that by reaching out to our high school councils and high school principals, personally visiting those high schools, reached out to local churches, and reached out to the new mayor of Topon Springs to help us recruit those children, those our students. The, we expose them to three O's. They are able to address any remedial areas that they have in terms of reading, writing, and math. They also earn three college credits, and probably the most important thing is that you get them enrolled in the fall session early. And of the 21 that were recruited for the Summer Success this year, 19 have already been enrolled for the, for the fall session. So reaching out to economically disadvantaged, first-time, first-generation and college student, that program. The junior achievement programs are programs that we offered on the St. Pete's, on the Topon Springs campus for four years, and this year, for the first time, we've, we're offering it on St. Pete's Gibbs, as well as Clearwater and Seminole. We hosted 36 children this year, 36 students in this program, ages 14 to 16. Again, we reached out to our middle schools and high schools to recruit this program, and this program actually exposes economically disadvantaged students to the, what's referred to as a STEM tech, disciplines of science, technology, engineering, and math, and we also expose them to career opportunities and all. These are disadvantaged students who, at their age, get exposed to businesses in terms of developing resumes, visiting businesses, developing interview skills, developing business ethics, learning about banking, and also entrepreneurship. So we're very proud of that program. I might add that Congressman Bill Arakis is here today, and one of the things that he encouraged the new mayor of Topon Springs to not work on was program to reach out into the community, offer to, to economically disadvantaged students, and these two programs does that very well, and I'm very proud of those programs. The other program that's relatively new on our campus is Early College. That program started at Topon Springs in the fall of 2008. That was the first year I was there. And we started with a cohort of about 75 students. We had an upper max of 125, but we started the first year with 75 students, and by the fall of 2009, we were at our max of 125 students. And this past spring, spring of 2010, we had our first graduation class from the Topon Springs campus. We graduated 36 of those students, and you may recall, one of those students was Karisma Abdu, the lady who was on the, the young student who was on the Presidential Search Committee, and she was also president of our student government, so she, these are very bright students. So we're very proud of her, our Early College Program, and that program is extremely popular in our area, so much so that we've had to move the information sessions for this program to the Clearwater campus, because we have 125 slots, and we typically get three to almost 300 people, parents and students, interested in getting to the program on our campus. Last but not least is our student enrollment program. This program has been offered on the Topon Springs campus for a long time. This is also offered to academically gifted students, along with the Early College Program. These are students with grade point average of 3.0 or more on a four-point scale. For this fall, we have 400 students already registered for almost more than 800 classes, and this is also a very popular program on my, on our campus. So in closing, these programs, I think, I value these programs because they do allow us to serve both spectrums of economically disadvantaged and the academically gifted students, and they also provide an opportunity for us to build on and nurture the relationships we have with our feeding high schools, Topon Springs High School, the Plum Harbor University High School, and Eastlake High School, and to work with their councils and work directly with their principals for the betterment of our sewing area and our communities in Topon Springs area. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. I'm here this morning to talk about some of the health education programs, and I have my slide behind you that we'll take a look at in a second, but one of the things that we know right now is that the health professions are strong in this economy, and that interest in the health professions has carried over into our programs. And what we see when you look at the top part of my chart here, you're going to see a three-year trend showing double-digit applications that we've been receiving at the Health Education Center. What this requires on our part is that we must verify GPAs. We must check for course completion, prerequisite course completion, check for certifications such as CPR certification and test scores. So it becomes a labor-intensive process. What we believe is that this trend will continue. The second part of my chart shows a little bit, kind of takes the applications and brings it a little bit a step further into actual numbers of students admitted into certain programs. Now, we have 11 AS programs at the Health Education Center. Three of them we call selective admission programs, of which nursing is one of them. The rest of the programs, we term as first qualified, first admitted. What you see here is a snapshot of three programs that are part of that first qualified, first admitted. What you can note out of here is, if you look at some of these programs, we have three year waiting lists in three of them. So that's our current situation. What I, what I hope to do over the next couple of meetings is to give you more information about our admission process and where we stand in terms of waiting lists and selective admission, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is the reason that we only can take in so many is because we don't have classroom space, or what is it?
Well, it's multifactorial. Part of it is space, absolutely correct. The other part of it, and a major portion of it, is the availability of clinical space out in the community. Being probably the largest user of clinical space in this county, we're pretty close to being maxed out with that. And the third part of that is, we have to look at, what are the number of jobs that are out there, so we do not flood the market with graduates?
That makes sense.
On that last comment, how is the market holding up for our graduates?
Well, the market is, is on. Well, the market is on a slight decrease as we look at it right now. We're beginning to see where, two years ago, our graduates were getting snapped up the day that they graduated. We're beginning to see in almost all of the fields that there's been, there's been a slowdown. They are finding jobs that's more difficult. There are less jobs that are available. Moving around outside of the area helps. I can tell you that I had a conversation about a week ago with one of the large healthcare providers in the area, and they related to me that, that the hospital census was down this year. And so, so they have decreased their hiring. And so they're only really looking at hiring in very critical situations. Now, that may change in another couple of months if the, if the census goes back up. But we're seeing that, we're seeing a little downward trend. There will be, there still are shortages, and there will remain shortages. It's just a matter of, of the major healthcare facilities are not hiring as much.
Will we be adjusting our admissions numbers if we see a decrease in employment?
Yes. Yes, we already, we will, and we already have, we did that in dental hygiene about, oh, I'm going to say about six months ago. We noticed that, that, we saw a trend, a couple-year trend, that, that our dental hygiene graduates were not finding jobs. So we decreased our admissions number from 36 to 30.
Is that a local issue, or is that a national trend in the employment sector?
It's a national trend, absolutely.
Maybe one of the future times you come and visit us with your presentation, maybe that whole thing about how we look at placement and adjust our figure, because I think you all do in the health, allied health area. I know you all do a great job in that area.
Thank you.
I think we could really learn a lot by what you have to say.
I will. Anything else? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to participate in this edition of J.C.'s Got Really Different Talent.[739.16][739.16](laughter) Really different at all states. I didn't really get the memo. I thought we were supposed to work off a single number, so, I am. And most of St. Pete College credit students are seeking an associate in arts or a transfer degree. And we're all very proud of our exciting new baccalaureate degrees. But alongside of those degrees are the associate in science programs that are more focused on workforce and employability skills than they are transfer. And at Seminole, we have four such programs, all in a wheelhouse, to use a phrase that you hear a lot when you watch the RACE presentations. The first addresses Pinellas County's number-one industry, which is hospitality and tourism. And the program is well-supported by hospitality businesses, so much so that every student who enrolls in the hospitality program gets to take the first course free, courtesy of industry fundraisers. Serving west-central Pinellas County and many of the beach communities in terms of geographic proximity, hospitality and tourism was a natural for us. And we hope to extend the hospitality program in the future with a complementary program in culinary. The second was our digital arts, media, and interactive web design program, that Hot Nud program, which features tracks in, as you can see from the slide, media production, video game foundations, graphic design, and interactive web, including such topics as social networking, which everyone realizes is, is so much the talk these days. This program is complementary to the technology emphasis, which has always been one of our core values on the Seminole campus. Third was Parks and Leisure Service, another program created directly in response to an industry request for more trained professionals in the parks and recreation field. The program makes all sorts of sense for the campus, given that the Seminole Recreation Center is just to the south of the campus, and the Natural Habitat Park, which you'll see next month, is just to the north of it. And the fourth program is the Environmental Science and Technology Program, started just last fall, with tracks in water resource management, energy management, and sustainability. The program is uniquely positioned to tap the interest of environmental issues overall and to train the technicians who may be seeking green jobs requiring an associate degree work. Again, we plan to have the Natural Habitat Park and Environmental Center grow and extend along with the program. So this is the full, two minutes, an insufficient amount of time to talk about all these great programs, and certainly not even an opportunity to talk about a newest one, our Entrepreneurship Certificate and the Companion Career and Entrepreneurship Center, which launches this fall. But that would be five, and five is another number for another day. We always appreciate the board and the president's support of the Seminole campus, and we thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Oliver, I just want to compliment you and your leadership in the campus, especially with regard to the documentary on Tony Janis and your collaboration with WEDU that we so enjoyed. And got to see a lot of the talent that you're producing out there, down at the Hangar Restaurant for that premiere. That was very, very enjoyable, and my, my compliments to you on that success.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, that wasn't his remarks, but that made it four minutes, and I had to, that didn't make it to the cutting room floor, so, but thank you very much. A very talented group of digital, digital arts, digital media students working on that program. And thanks to the board for coming out for that presentation.
Thank you.
We also want to know that, let everyone know that the owner of the Hangar Restaurant is a Seminole High graduate.
Correct.
Graduated in the same class I did.
Absolutely right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And another thing that the Seminole campus received a lot of publicity for, and Senator Jones was part of it, is they hosted the forum on the oil spill and had the trade winds represented, the Florida, the Economic Development Council. And I think there was over 400 people, the newspaper reported, and it was carried also live on the internet. And so it's a good, it was just good publicity, good partnership with our college there. Good morning, Yvonne.
Good morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today and share with you some exciting news about the enrollment growth at SBC Downtown and Midtown. We have a slide for that. We've been tracking the growth of SBC Downtown over the past five years, since we moved into our permanent home in downtown St. Petersburg. As you see on the graph, we've had a tremendous spike in growth in terms of FTE. You see 37.7% at Downtown over the last year. On the next slide, you'll see the incredible growth of our Midtown site over the past year. In terms of FTE, we've grown 94.2% in 2009, 2010. In terms of unduplicated headcount, we're now serving over 2,000 students downtown and over 300 students at Midtown. What are we doing to address this growth? Well, first of all, expansion of facilities to address the demand. Currently, we have two classrooms on the third floor downtown under construction, and at Midtown, we have two classrooms under construction, as well as shared faculty office space and a multipurpose room. And that multipurpose room will serve student activities, learning support, and our Women on the Way program. Construction at both sites is planned so that all this new space will be used starting the fall term. So we're very excited about that. What else are we doing to address the enrollment increase? Well, we've had some increase in staffing, which I'm very happy about. We recently hired a full-time student life and leadership coordinator and a full-time technical resource specialist, TRS, and those people will be serving both sites. We also have increased our course offerings, both in number and in the types of offerings of classes. And we have future plans. I think the sky is the limit in terms of, you know, what the possibilities are at both sites. So we'll continue to look for opportunities for expansion of programs, facilities, and services for our unique population of students at both sites. Today, I focused on growth, and over the next few months, as we bring updates to you of Downtown and Midtown, I'll be focusing on the diversity of both sites, the zip code areas that we're drawing from, and the programs that we're initiating to serve the unique populations of students that are coming to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Yvonne, a question for you. This growth is phenomenal, but it also shows a fantastic need. And I believe you should be coming back to this board, hopefully, and be with Susan Reiter on some plans for, and along with our, with Dr. Law, because these two areas are not going to be able to sustain a great deal more growth than if the, because there's no facilities there. And if the potential demand is there for these two sites, then we need to be thinking about how or what our possibilities are for future expansion. And I would encourage all, because if these numbers are going to be, going to continue, and we're going to continue to serve the population that apparently wants to use these facilities, then we may have to do some things that are not on the drawing board today for them.
Well, I appreciate that very much, and I thank you, thank all of you for the support over the years that's got us to where we are today. And if I'd have known we were doing, you know, Provost Have Talent, I would have prepared a song for you.[1267.78][1267.78](laughter) I was caught off-guard.
Yvonne, hold on, Yvonne has a question.
Do you have a question? Yes.
More of a comment, Dr. Oliver. You should be very proud and commended on the job you've done, both at Downtown and Midtown. But I kind of do want to piggyback on Mr. Johnson's comments in terms of growth. I think in both areas, we're going to continue to see growth until the economy comes back downtown and midtown, because I think people are trying to not only further where they are in their career, but also these are first-time folks that are going to college, as Dr. Carney talked about, in the Midtown campus. So we really should look at how we can master plan both of these, the site and the campus of Downtown and the Midtown, to make sure that we can continue to have these, to invite, have an inviting environment for them to learn in. And I think that's what you've created. I think that the need has been there for a while, and I'm glad to see that we stepped in before anybody else. I just want to, like I said, I want to make sure, though, that we continue to do that. As Mr. Johnson put it earlier, we need to figure out how we're going to be able to grow, because there are going to be a lot of limitations, especially if the economy comes back and the real estate market starts to turn, especially in Downtown. We had quite a dilemma trying to even get, acquire the property that we have there now, parking structures and a whole lot of things. So I'd really like, Dr. Law, at some point, for us to have a real serious master planning process about Downtown especially, but also because of Midtown's growth as well, I'd like to talk about that as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think it'd be fair to say we're pedal to the metal on that issue. We've had a number of very good meeting planning sessions. The master plan is in place. Yvonne's working on a, on a staffing master plan to go with it. We'll be bringing you in the early fall the benefit of that work, but we have invested time, and we've invested time with some of the players downtown already through Mr. Brett. We had a very nice meeting with the mayor to discuss early concepts with him. Glaive Davis has been very helpful to me early on, so we're go. Our first goal was to make sure we had enough room on, in August, so we're, you know, kind of taking our resources as they come. But, yes, sir.
Just to, I mean, parking, I think, is going to be key, I think. Right, Dr. Oliver, I mean, that's the one thing that I hear about Downtown, is we don't have enough parking. And I don't know how we do that, because it costs just as much to build parking spaces, right, Susan, as it does to build a building?
Excuse me, but just to speak to that issue, sorry.
Just to speak to that issue, Yvonne and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning early to meet with Joe Kabicki, the Director of Transportation for the city of St. Petersburg. And we've already floated the idea of using the Baywalk parking garage and the Dolphin parking, which is on the approach to the pier. So we've got some discussions in the works, and we're looking at some other property opportunities at the Downtown and Midtown, under Dr. Law's guidance.
Mr. Gibbons, just in relation to that, when we met with Mayor Foster, Dr. Law and I did, to update him on FIM and also to talk about the progress at Downtown, as we were walking out of City Hall, Dr. Law's comment was, "We've got to do something about parking."[1483.65][1483.65](laughter) And so it's definitely on the radar, and so...
Susan has been telling me for years that it costs just as much to build a, one space as it does to build a, almost a classroom, so we've got to figure that out. That is going to be key.
I think everyone's working on it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can always use William Spark.
That's true. Use William Spark. Terry can help you with that, though.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wanted to talk to you a little bit this morning about pop-up books. And I brought one here just so you can see what I'm talking about. They won't fit on your Kindle, but they have certainly sparked my interest in reading again. We don't normally do pop-up books as part of our program. We undertook this as a project last fall, but it garnered so much attention that it, Terry Robinson was very good to display this and make this known to other librarians around the state. And so these books have been exhibited at a number of libraries, and there's some more planned. I think what I really wanted to do this morning, though, is to use this as a segue to speak just briefly about the Fine Arts Program on the Clearwater Campus. It really is a lustrous and sparkling jewel in the college's crown, and I think sometimes maybe isn't noticed as much as it should be. We have artists there, significant artists on the faculty. Just to use one as an example, Kevin Grass, who is our painting instructor, has exhibits around the country, including recent exhibits at the Sacred and Liturgical Art Center in Springfield, Illinois, at the Yvonne Liebig Art Center in Naples, and also an exhibit, a solo exhibit called A Sense of Place at the State Capitol in Tallahassee. But of course, just having fine art faculty isn't enough. You also have to have student success. And our students in those programs regularly transfer to UCF, USF, FSU, UF, as well as other prestigious institutions around the country. We have 675 students who enrolled in classes in ceramics, printmaking, painting, drawing, 20 sections of classes last year. We have state-of-the-art facilities. I know some of the facilities at the Clearwater Campus are in need of upgrading, but our Fine Arts facilities are wonderful. We have a number of kilns, including one that was built by the students and the faculty. We have drawing labs and printmaking facilities, second to none. We also began an associate of science degree in photography a couple of years ago. We now have 57 students who are majoring in photography and several hundred who are taking classes in that area. So I just this morning wanted to give you an opportunity to consider the arts program at the Clearwater Campus, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Nice job. Great.
Thank you.
Can I see the pop-up?[1671.64][1671.64](laughter)
We're fighting with each other. Okay, I'll leave that alone.
Just going to those for the grandkids. That's cool.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Here's the number, 1,820 music and dance students at St. Pete Gibbs. Fine Arts is alive and well at St. Pete Gibbs and enjoys a position of respect in the Tampa Bay arts community. This 1,820-student snapshot is from fall 2009. Those students took 185 different sections, excuse me, 158 different course sections in music and dance. Our students are in 25-plus performances each year. They perform in the Music Center, the Palladium, the Humanities Hall, Lurma, the Arts Auditorium at Clearwater, and venues around the community. As some of you know, the Madrigalians have gone further afield and have performed as far away as Russia. We have 11 ensembles, including traditional music, and then our Mura students, the music industry recording art students, and our dance group. The Performing Arts Department at St. Pete Gibbs includes 43 faculty, six of whom are full-time. St. Pete Gibbs provides instruction in music for all instruments in the orchestra and pipe organ, harp, and piano. All of our classes are taught by credentialed faculty from among the finest. Eight of our faculty are full-time Florida Orchestra members, and four of those are section leaders. To go with the numbers, a little bit of anecdotal information. I could give you 20-plus stories. We have time for three. Ramita Miller, a voice student, was invited personally by Placino Dominga to study at Juilliard, and upon her graduation asked her to continue to work with him in California. She continues to be a successful opera singer today. Then there was Oksana Kaluznagova from Russia, a piano student with a very interesting story. She is now a piano- She is now a piano entertainer and entertains and performs for an amazing array of Hollywood and other instructors, one more other celebrities. One more, Michael Lynch, a dual enrollment student, placed for the American Idol in 2010. The college has offered quality learning experiences in the arts for many years. I believe it's this tradition of solid academic programs that allows us to enjoy our credibility and our position of respect in the arts community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Devon.
No, I just said, "Thank you."
Over the past several years, we forged great partnerships with the Florida Orchestra, the American Stage, the Palladium, obviously, we have an ownership interest more than a partnership. And I know, I went and saw the Opera Carmen, and in front of me was one of our instructors, she's great, our voice instructor.
Marilyn Michael.
Marilyn. And she was saying her students are participating, but I don't think they were participating in an academic way, as far as lab credit. Have we, how much have we fully taken advantage of all these partnerships and integrated our academics with these partnerships, especially with the Florida Orchestra, the American Stage, and with the Palladium as far as their presentations?
Dean Steele is working on that all the time. We do have master instructors that come from the Florida Orchestra to our campus to work with our students. We look back to the agreements that have those, provides those in there, and he works very hard to make sure that we do have those synergies. We do have back and forth between the Florida Orchestra and our campus.
Like, would a student be able to get credit hour, a lab credit hour by participating as an intern in the Florida Orchestra, or would they, the actual performance? You know, that, to me, is a lab, you know, just like a science lab, you're actually doing it, doing it, you know? And Marilyn was telling me, you know, trying to teach voice students who have never, who are singing in French, which most of them have never sung in French before, I don't think any of us probably sung other than aloe vera, you know? So I mean, you know, that was a tremendous learning experience, but it didn't sound like that was part of the academic program. This is, you know, because they have this interest in music, they're doing it. I'm just wondering, how much and long are we just integrating this stuff?
I'll have to report back to you on that, but it sounds like a great idea.
Dr. Steele, do you want to come forward, though? And I know we have very nice pianos at Florida.
Those students did get credit, they got credit in MUO 2501 Opera Workshop, and this is the second or third year that Dr. Michael has done that with Mark Sforcini. So Sarah Hageman, Erica Van Gordon, and Amanda Fullerton of the fourth, I can't remember the name. But, and this, it continues to grow. As far as the Florida Orchestra partnerships, we have courses that, a course called Music, Introduction to Music, MUH 1110, three credits, that is centered around visits to the Florida Orchestra and the Talk Back Sessions taught by Jeff Donavich, Susan Robinson, and they take turns teaching that. That's with the help of Cindy Tully and Paula Hannah of the Foundation making that connection. And that runs this fall. I think you're going to visit one of those classes, she's been invited to attend.
And how about American Stage, have we done?
Nothing with American Stage yet. That was, we were advised to proceed with caution with them. But that may change with the theater program that's being proposed. We had a meeting, Stan Vitto and I, and some key, Susan DeMurs, Jimmy Chang, we met yesterday, at Stan's request, actually, to discuss the reinstitution of a theater program, and there are plans to, with Dr. Law's approval, to go forward with that this year. And I think that that has some possibilities for some connections with them, and I would seek advice on how to proceed with that from my superiors.
Go ahead, Dave, go ahead. Well, as far as I think the board concerned, is more foolhead, because in our partnerships, we want to use those facilities and that professionalism that they both have for our students. That's part of the reason that we have given them the quarters and the rent structure we have. I think that was part of our original agreement. So we want to use that. Also, the Palladium use, that's an excellent auditorium. Do we use that for lecture halls at all, as far as Downtown goes? Yvonne, this might be a question for you, too. I don't know, I don't know whose jurisdiction the Palladium falls under, but for large classroom space, and since we seem to be short on classrooms, that might be an excellent place to have classrooms.
May I comment on the music use of it? As you know, the Music Center is beautiful and wonderful acoustical hall, thanks to our facilities team and leadership to provide the perfect acoustics for music. However, it is only 300 seats. Wonderful place for the Steinway concerts, chamber music, pipe organ concerts, and it's big enough for our band and many, 90% of what we do, but there's 10% that we need the larger space, and so we do use the Palladium for that. The college chorus and community chorus have their concerts there every fall, and we've used it for other concerts as well. We have to work in with their season, because not all of our concerts make as much money as what Paul Wilborn brings to the Palladium. But we use it regularly, and we plan to use it even more. We've used it for MIRA concerts, you heard that at the last board meeting as well, as a staging area for students to learn both the performance side of it and the technology side of it, running the shows, the backstage work, the work in the, in the sound booth, which is being upgraded. So we have a vested interest in that hall. Without it, we would not have a hall large enough for our most significant concerts, if you think about it. Otherwise, even a clear art, fine arts auditorium, as nice as it is, it's not quite large enough for most significant, large concerts.
Well, I'm glad we will use that. I heard a complaint at the Palladium the other day, mainly from our female population, and Susan, this is, maybe going back to your area, the restrooms for the females are totally out of proportion, because during the break, some of them, I guess, have been using any restrooms, you know, even the male restroom. So we do need to address that, if we're going to continue to open that to the public.
Devon, did you have a comment?
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I was just waiting. Thank you, Dr. Steele and Dr. White. I have two quick comments, and one is that if we are going to have these arts partnerships or have these folks in our facilities, or do these partnerships, we really need to figure out how to integrate our students into it a little more. And that's not to demean the courses that we have already, because I think that's key as well. But I'd like to see our band, you know, and our college band working with the orchestra and figuring, you know, I want to see these kids, these young folks are having the opportunity to work with American Stage and have the opportunity to move or transition into, into really learning what that industry is about. Because we've given a lot in terms of space and time and effort and real money, and I want to make sure that the folks and the young people that attend our college, the young adults that attend the college, are having the opportunity to really take full advantage of all of the arts programs that we partner with. And not just to go and listen, but to be a part of it. You know, there are jobs that are associated with orchestras and acting and so many other things that are not out in front. I mean, so there are other areas that we can look at in partnerships. It's not always putting our young people on the stage in front of everybody. The only thing is, Mr. Johnson makes a good point, you know, when I was in college, I don't know if they still do this anymore, but, you know, I had some classes that there was, it was a real need for work, there was an elective, and we had 400, 300 students in there, and we had a big hall, and everybody was in there, and coming, person lectures down front. I think, you know, with the space needs that we have in Downtown, we need to consider even the Palladium and other venues that we have as a lecture hall for those classes, they have big demands, so that we're not turning our students away. So thank you, Dr. White, for all you've done and all you continue to do. Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, Devon. Does the FD Center get represented today or not?
No.
Okay. I would like just one more brief report, and that's from Kay. Kay, you're on the spot here. We had a very significant retirement today. Can you please tell us what you're doing to fill that void?
Well, as I mentioned to you on the phone the other day, the growth has been tremendous in College of Technology and Management. We have six majors. Many of them are focused on management and business, and with the technology management one, we really wanted to look at exploring, adding more technology courses to that, computer science, and to do some upper division technology courses. And we also would like to go for specialized accreditation in our business program. Thank you. And so we had this opportunity, and we decided that we were going to be able to merge the upper and lower division, technology and business courses with our upper division program. So we have, we've taken technology and management, and we're moving that into its own area, it will be computer and information technologies. And then we're taking the business program, we're going to have the College of Business, which is going to have international business, management and organizational leadership, business administration, and sustainability, and they're going to merge with the upper and the lower divisions. So all of those courses are going to be, all those programs are going to be in one area, and then technology is all going to be in one area. And Sharon Sowen, who is our dean currently in the tech, business and technology, she will be the dean of the computer and information sort of technologies, and we're doing a national search for a dean of College of Business.
I think that's pretty significant.
So I think it'll be really great, because we're going to be able to do wonderful things with our business administration. We're going to do CPA, we're going to do a marketing, we want to apply for national accreditation, so we think that's going to be really great. We're going to look at all of our management courses into that program, and, you know, it's going to be a wonderful opportunity, really.
What do you mean by CPA?
Well, we have a business administration track right now, and we want to make sure that those students can apply for the CPA in terms of all the programs, the coursework that they need in order to sit for that exam, and to actually graduate seamlessly into a graduate program. And so when we have each of these courses that have different requirements, and we're trying to meet a lot of demands from different students, this way we're able to focus the business program primarily on business students, and the technology program will be able to focus those on more technology-related coursework.
Well, the accounting profession in Florida requires a fifth year.
Right.
Are we going to work towards a fifth year?
Well, we want to make sure that all the coursework is seamless and that they accept it. You know, right now, there's a certain requirement in terms of prerequisites that are mandated by the graduate program, and so we want to make sure that all those courses are aligned appropriately.
Kay, just on that particular program, unless things have changed in the last four years, the fifth year does not necessarily have to be graduate program courses, there just has to be additional courses. Now, a lot of students elect to go to get the masters at the same time.
Right, right.
So...
I just wondered, Mr. Chairman, if we were somehow going beyond the BA into a fifth year, and what you're saying...
Well, we're not doing graduate courses, as you know.
Right, okay, okay. And not that I'm being wrong with it.
Oh, I know that.
I just wanted to clarify that point in my mind. Mr. Johnson's next question is going to be about the establishment of our law school.
I'm on the football team.
A medical program. She's part of a Johns Hopkins, get in on that. Devon, did you have something else?
No.
Thank you, Kay.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Law, this has been the first time I've done this, I applaud you for this effort. I may suggest, and it's up to the board to talk about this, since we have so many sites, we may want to do this half, you know, half them one month and alternate months and just not have every campus at each one of these things. What do you all think of that, just in the interest of time?
Well, this should be a kind of a workshop, you know, just, we'll come in at 8 o'clock, whether 8:30. Because I think this was quite informative, I think.
I liked it. I think, I think we should continue to do all of them.
Do all?
Yeah, for a little while, I mean, and then when we want to have a workshop, we can change it up, but until we have a specific workshop, maybe we... I thought it was very informative, actually.
Oh, it definitely was. Is that the consensus, though, to do all? And we'll do all?
We'll try to, I have some feedback.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll evaluate it, we'll come back in, we'll try to see how it works. Thank you for the support, we appreciate it.
It was a good idea.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
JC didn't win, though.
Oh, JC.
There are two items of all business, and Dr. Law.
Yes, one, I think we included, you had, at a prior meeting, questions had been asked regarding the crop program. In fact, I think you have in front of you some more information. It is, as we had indicated, a very valuable program. It serves, you heard today even more of where we're reaching into the high school areas and trying to help students who need to see us. So we appreciate that, we just wanted to follow up, we didn't have the information you wanted. The second, I'd like to...
Dr. Law, on the crop program, and I did appreciate the statistics you gave on that, since we do this, to me, it's an investment in folks to get them into college, and a significant number from the statistic you gave us go to our college. I just hope there's follow-up, that we identify those students and just don't say, "Good, we've got you in college, our job's done, now we'll turn you into the program." I hope we identify them and say, "These are folks we have an investment in," and then make sure they get involved in the next programs we have, the men on the way, that type of thing, to keep the support, to make them successful in college.
The question, you had to ask me that question, and the answer is, we haven't done as much of that as we need to, but I think you see with some of the changes we're making in our student services, that's a very high likelihood is to identify students and then keep them on track. They need to know that they're on a continuum of support as well, so we'll take that as very valuable input.
I'd just like to say, you know, Dr. Law's not even been here, what, two months now, and probably 60% of our conversation has been about how do we engage these young people in high school and get them on our campuses, and have them prepared when they come to our campuses. So I think he's going to do a good job of that, and I'm available to help with that. I think that is critical, especially when we have, I, Dr. Furlong was saying all the time that these young people are taking AP courses, but then they test to come into our entry-level classes, and they were, they had to take remediation courses. So we need to make sure that we focus on that, and if, whatever I'm available to do, we'll do that.
Devon, that's great, that you're providing the leadership. Thank you.
The second item, I've asked Doug to give the board what would be, I assume, the final briefing, that we're ready to ship sales after this meeting on the textbook voucher program, and we wanted to give you the details on how we're going to do it, some insight into how we're going to evaluate it, and when you'll touch it next, but again, we have been holding for this. Doug, if you would, just set that up for us.
Great. As you know, in the long run, we have other textbook affordability initiatives that we'll be bringing back to you, but in the short term, we have, we plan to implement this program tomorrow. We've had a large group who's really been brainstorming sort of the logistics, and we've developed a list of questions that have been provided to staff and will be provided to students and so on, so I want to run through those real quickly and just kind of give you the gist of the program, and this is new territory for us, so we hope we've covered everything, but there may be a question somewhere that we will find out as we go along. Any student registered for a credit class during the fall term will receive the $20.8, $20 credit. The other common question that we know is going to be asked, if one is receiving financial aid or other book benefits, are they still eligible? And yes, it, the credit will apply to any textbook rented or purchased. If they have a financial aid, a book line of credit, they will simply get charged less toward that book line of credit, which will give them $20 to use for other, for other things. For right now, as far as the length of the program, it will be valid through October 29th, which we will then look at the results, bring them back to you, and you can then make an assessment of whether, you know, we go further or not. Since this was a budget item, we want to see where we are relative to the budget at that point. As far as what can be purchased with the credit, it can be purchased or used towards new or used textbooks, purchase or rental at the, at Fall Out Campus or their online bookstore. They've made arrangements on their online site for the students to be able to do a dropdown and select the credit, and the system will know if they are eligible. They will, Fall Out will know if they are eligible by way of an electronic file that we will send to them daily, and Fall Out will actually then track that, and they will know at the register whether that student has met the eligibility criteria. There's a one-day lag, if they register by 4 o'clock on the day, then the previous, the previous business day, they will then show up in the Fall Out bookstore as being eligible for the credit. Right now... Right now, we, tomorrow, we will have emails going out to all students who, all students. And then, for those registered, our mere three telephone system will also make a call advising them of the program and their eligibility. We're also, we printed a number of flyers and so on that will be posted in the bookstores and given to students and in the MAP centers and so on, that has all of these frequently asked questions on them. The one that came up late in the process was, since we're starting this in, late in July, we know that there are students who've registered that may have already purchased their book. And if they go back to Fall Out, they will receive a twenty dollar rebate toward that purchase. So, we think we've covered that. And there will be some, hopefully a limited number, that between the start of registration and July 23rd, that perhaps have purchased their books from another vendor. And what we've said is that if they will simply provide the receipts, Fall Out has agreed to forward their credit to the spring term if they are in that situation. The, if someone does just seek a refund, they will, maybe they buy a book, drop a class, do something, bring the book back, they will simply be given the refund minus the twenty dollar credit. Okay, so that part won't be affected. At the end of the term, if students bring used books back, then there are, it is, the credit program does not affect any of the buyback. It'll be bought back at the same rate per the contract that we currently have. I ran through those. I believe that's the last one. I ran through those fairly quickly, but any questions?
Doug?
Yeah?
Is any other institution doing anything like this?
Not that I'm aware of.
But just because they aren't, we're still following the other avenues of technology?
Absolutely.
And with all these new, I can't even tell you what all the names of the gadgets, Kindle, that type of thing. And we're still following and trying to pursue that to see where it takes us.
Yes, yes, we are. And in fact, we should have some information shortly, because we mentioned the Daytona Initiative. And I believe their RFPs are due this next week from the publishers. And so, we should have some information on that, perhaps, at the next board meeting.
I think that would be interesting, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to know if there's
I just wanted to know if there's some type of requirement that they go halfway through the course, they don't have to pay the twenty dollars back or something like that, because...
Accounting nightmare.
Okay.
Yeah, it could get very complicated.
What is the eligibility?
If, as long as they are registered for a course during the fall term, then they are eligible.
Twenty dollars for each book?
This, per student.
Per student.
Yes. I'm sure there'll be lots who would want it, who will want it.
In other words, if every course, it has a book, they get twenty dollars off?
No, if they buy, right, just one twenty dollar.
That's what I thought. Look, that's not much.
Terry, to help, was that budget item about five hundred thousand? Did I remember that correctly?
That's what it is.
It was five hundred thousand. That's why we've kind of put initially a timeframe on it so that we could evaluate where we are relative to that.
Yeah. I thought it was very interesting. I had mentioned to you before the meeting about Amazon.
Yes.
In the press yesterday, first time ever where they're doing more eBooks than hard copy books.
Oh, fascinating.
It feels like this thing is moving along very, very fast.
Well, if you have a Kindle, it's just too easy to push that button and download. I've got about fifty of them.
And I also hear the prices on the Kindles are dropping like mad.
Yes, it's all dropping, yeah.
Mr. Jim, we are, as you see, you know, there was a head of steam before I got here, and I'm really delighted, Mr. Johnson. But let me say this, the U.S. Department of Education is watching this like a hawk because there are issues regarding students with disabilities. So, providing opportunities is one thing. Making that a standard then triggers a whole range of other things for students who are sight impaired or other kinds of things. So, we're trying to work our way through it. That's right. It's all brand new. Our intention was to make it as easy for students right now to access this program. And we're going to be a lot smarter by this time tomorrow after we kick this program off. But thank you for your support on this. Let us get it underway. We'll keep you informed.
Our thought was, like, it was a board's thought, that we were mandated an eight percent increase to add on to the students. We could take part of that eight percent and help them out with the textbooks.
That's a good way of looking at it.
And that's what, the way I thought, I thought we understood, and I understood, we were doing, try to do something to offset that eight percent increase and help the students out.
And that's exactly what it is.
I would appreciate you considering contacting the Community College Times or the Chronicle and see if we get an article on this. I think this is a really different initiative that probably colleges could, would be interested in reading about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Good suggestion. Thanks, Doug.
Well, speaking of that, Ken, why don't you go on the agenda of, in October, of ACCT, and make a presentation on behalf of St. Petersburg College? You'd be good at that. And I think this is something that would help out all institutions, just to kind of think through this problem. Because textbook cost, if we don't watch them, we're going to cost more than tuition.
Dick, it's funny you bring up that point. I was not going to do that, but I was, I have a letter started on my computer, which I'm going to need the colleges' help with, to both ACCT and AACC. I think there needs to be a national community college commission on the whole textbook issue. And I think the national leadership of community colleges dropped the ball on this topic. Because with the technology the way it is, there needs to be some type of, you know, national best practices in this area. And I'm going to ask for your help on that. I have a draft letter started. But I'm going to ask them to form a real meaningful, not just some blue ribbon thing that prepares a report that no one reads, but a, something where there's some definite results to come out of it. So, instead of waiting for Congress and Department of Education to regulate us in this because we're not doing a good job as a nationwide, we should get in this and enforce it. And I think that the problem's been the same problem we've had here. We've grown reliant on bookstore income for mobile purposes. We do it for, to help with our student tutoring and things like that. So, I mean, I think that's a hard thing for presidents to address right now. And maybe some of them are reluctant to address it. But I think there needs to be better national leadership on this issue. And I'm going to suggest to both organizations that some type of commission be appointed to really take, like the discussion we've had, which I see other colleges, obviously Daytona's had it, colleges around the state are having, but there's no collective, this is what we should do as a system and be strong with the publishers and bring them on and get them, you know, as part of this to come up with some type of solution. But like Terry said, for his son to pay, I think you gave one example of two hundred dollars for a textbook, is, you know, almost beyond comprehension. And so, we're working hard to make a course affordable. And then, there's a, then the unregulated two hundred dollar textbook is out there.
He's going back tomorrow to get that twenty bucks, so.
Well, Ken, there's a couple other avenues. I don't know whether Will Holcomb is, we're in contact with him, but if he's our leader of our community college system, we should certainly be keeping him informed of this idea. And then, the vice president's wife, Mr. Biden, if you were going to put together a letter, I think I would CC her on it because she seems to have an interest in the community college system.
Well, she's an instructor, yeah.
And also, as you and I have talked, we know that the Gates Foundation is a little bit twisted on the graduation rates. Maybe they should have somehow, we can give input to them, too. Because these are problems that students all over the country, I'm sure, are facing. And there has to be, if we all work together, we can probably find the right solution.
Well, I think this has been a great topic for this board. And it's something, obviously, it's an ongoing struggle that we'll continue to address. And as you say, Dick's off somehow. Let's move on with the agenda. New business, we have the quarterly report. Any questions on that? I just had the question, I saw her buying ninety thousand dollars of gym equipment for the Clearwater campus. And I just didn't realize that we offer this to students and to staff folks to, and we have regular hours for a workout facility on campus. I thought we, I've seen it at the Gibbs campus in that separate building detached from the campus. Are those the only two campuses? Are they all state? I see we have, so Tarpon, so this is, this is something seminal that we have?
Mr. Burke, we have a partnership with the Seminole Recreation Center. We buy passes and those passes can be used by students, faculty and staff.
That's excellent, too. So, that's good. That's just something I didn't realize until reading this report that we were doing. That's a great, great item for our students. Any questions on any of the quarterly report, folks?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made. And second in all favor, say it, say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Item B, one, two, and three. I just want to point out that Dr. Law is on the WorkNet board. And that's important. There's been a lot of discussion nationally about the effectiveness of these WorkNet boards. And it's, I'm sure, a constant struggle. Dr. Law, do you have any comments on that?
I went to one meeting, and they certainly have the right people in the room. So, I'll, you know, they're the people who are, who can make things happen in workforce education and development here. So, I look forward to working with them. And as I mentioned to you, I'm also trying to broker a spot on the Economic Development Council.
That's excellent.
So, I may ask for some help on that.
Is the WorkNet board, I'm not familiar with it all, but is that kind of a, more of a vocational setup than we are?
I think that would be fair. I think the, if I can, I'll try to describe it the way I have it in my mind. Most of the federal monies flow through the WorkNet boards. And they flow through the governor's office to the distributed WorkNet boards throughout the state.
There you go.
So, they control a great deal of resource. And then, they target grants to do training across the board. They could be lower end than we do, and they may be in our wheelhouse as well. But they then target the grants to effectively meet local needs.
Is there, is there a potential for us to be partnershipsing with them, maybe from the academic side? I don't think we should get into automotive repair, but I don't know that we are not already, when you think of some of the professions that we work on.
Can we see JC's, rather than address this here, this is fine with Mr. Johnson, I think we probably need like a fifteen-minute report on how WorkNet benefits this college. Because from my understanding, it's not direct dollars to us. It's helping students come here for programs. And so, we're saying, it's kind of like a Pell Grant type of thing. We're saying the benefit of it, but we're saying it by students enrolling here by virtue of going through the WorkNet program.
You're exactly right, Mr. Johnson. I'm on the WorkNet board. You're exactly right. And the other thing that they have done is they do the same thing that we do, in a sense, with our health-related programs, is we look at the targeted industries of growth within the county. We try to make sure that the people who are out of work get some type of training and are able to get to that job. And they place people on jobs. But they also have employers that are on the WorkNet board, large employers, so that where they're able to keep up with what's going on and how that dollars can be utilized to help people get from, you know, unemployment to work.
Right. Well, that's the same thing we're talking about. And I just am talking about if we have the right kind of coordination, which I don't know we do or don't.
Would you mind making that even more? It'd be helpful for me to learn what the history has been. So, I'll
Maybe fifteen-minute report next board meeting would be great.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have approval of item B, one through three? If not so, I would like to make a motion.
Would you mind, if you don't mind, would you add C to that, too?
I'd be glad to add C.
All of B and all C, is that the motion, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Any other discussion on this topic? The other item I had a question on is, in this spending, we have a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in billboard advertising. And I was just concerned whether, do we have an overall marketing plan for the college? And I posed that question to Dr. Law. And I was pleased with the answer that we're in the process. Dr. Law, would you address that?
Yes, sir. We are, it's a great deal of money. And we are reviewing a more comprehensive approach toward our advertising. Again, people have been very entrepreneurial. So, where we had money to support UPC, we use that as advertising. Where we had money in baccalaureate programs, they have very effective advertising. But my goal would be to get everybody together and say, "Does it make sense from a big picture view?" Because we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. But it's currently underway, and certainly, we will realign where necessary. We'll bring a plan as to what we find when we do that.
Dr. Law, I have, maybe it's a burr in my saddle, but we're finding, and I've been watching more of it, these for-profit institutions do an awful lot of advertising. And as near as I can tell, some are in financial trouble, but they offer degrees and their cost is a lot higher. And the students are coming out of institutions with no job and not the education they should have. And I know we can do a better job. And the only thing that I see different between what we do and what they do is advertising.
And we do it better.
And we, but we do a worse job of advertising. They do, that's the advantage they have. They advertising and they blow it up. And they say, "Hey, look, if you come to us, we'll get you here." But we know we can get that student in a better position. And I hate to see the students get what I would call shortchanged. Now, maybe, maybe my mindset is wrong, but I question whether I'm not right. But if that's the case, then maybe we should be doing more of that direct advertising to counteract these people going out and getting huge debts and no education.
Dick, before Dr. Law responds, I just, we have to be very careful on this because, and I've studied these for-profits, some, and not only do they advertise, but their big difference is their financial aid people are salespeople. They hook you in there and they, they're like closers. I mean, they're like closers. And they go in and get a student, when they come in there, their job is to get them to be signed up, get them the financial aid package, and do the sale. And that's why we focus so much on financial aid on the past, you know, few months and talking about this board. But to me, if we have resources, that's almost like, you know, we're a known entity. We have to continue to do marketing. I'm not suggesting that. But the resource has to be help the students when they come on our campus, not with a closer mentality of making the sale, but of helping the student. But to me, our colleges lack in the resources in that area. And we've kind of been told that. And we are changing our programs to be a lot more student-friendly. But I would like to see a lot more resources put if we have another fifty thousand to hire another position, to help a student once they get on here, to get them through the system, because it's hard. And we put too much burden still on the student. And they get discouraged because it is so darn complicated, applying for Pell. How does that relate to this? How does this relate to this item? And to me, that's where, you know, if we can help them in that regard, that would be advertising dollars in a way well-spent. But Dr. Law, your chance to respond?
No, I, my only point was going to say, we need to take just a comprehensive look. You know, Mr. Johnson, if you and I are seeing the ads, that in our demographic, that's one thing. There's a big demographic that, you know, I don't, Vial Network, I don't watch MTV, I miss a lot of stuff. But people who know how to do that, it's very sophisticated to get the message. I think we would be astounded if we saw how twenty-year-olds are being bombarded, as you talk, in that sense. So, we need to be very, there's a learning curve, I think, for me and for others on how this really works.
But it seems to me that we're missing the boat as an educational institution when we aren't gathering those students.
We are.
And Yvonne was quite helpful. I, there's a friend of mine, and we were having lunch, and the young waitress came up there. And she was a single mother with a child, trying to support herself to go to school. And she was going to school downtown, to downtown campus. And I said, "Well, are you, are you enrolled? You have the Pell grant?" And she kind of looked at me and said, "No." And I said, "Well, why not?" Well, some of my friends have gone in and got some counseling and got it. But some other people have told me just to go to, go to the internet and get it. And she was just totally lost. And she was just totally lost. And so I called Yvonne's office. I don't know whether the lady that I talked to was here, Yvonne, but she said, I'll take care of it. And they want a stepfather, because all I knew was the young lady's first name, but she was out of Chataway's. So they called Chataway's, Yvonne, from your office to find out who this young lady was, because I had to, that's all I had, and talked to her and told her to come in, and they would personally take care of it. Now, that's what you're talking about, Ken, and this is strictly by accident. But our program should be so that these students don't have to turn to other alternatives and rack up huge amounts of debts they'll never be able to pay and maybe not even get a job out of it.
Real quick, let's just be, I, I, I hear you, Mr. Johnson. I, I think that we should give Dr. Law the opportunity, though, to really look at a marketing plan that will work. Because, for example, in my, in my business every day, we touch 18 to 35 through cable radio now. They're sitting at their computers at work. We touch, 60% of that population is touched by cable radio now during the day. They're no longer in their cars, they're not driving. You know, I don't use cable radio, I couldn't tell you, but that's the big industry. CBS and all these radio companies are now streaming live radio over your, these companies' computers and that's what they listen to. For example, a Hispanic market, which is huge for us in Orlando and in Casimila County, you know, we put more television because that gives us, that's where we reach the Hispanic market, is in television. So I think you really should have a professional come in and get the data that you need to make sure you're reaching the market that you're trying to reach.
Mr. Chair, I think we've turned this over to Dr. Law.
Good discussion, though.
Yeah.
Good discussion. And Devron, your company is a master at marketing in the most positive sense. And we probably should ask Devron some companies.
We're shooting the blind a lot.
Y'all do, you know, but.
We should give you another job.
No.
We have a motion on the floor. The only other item I want to bring up is the Carl Perkins Funds. We get over $1 million this current year. I asked the question, how much we making this year off Carl Perk, that's a bad way of putting it. How are we serving people through the Carl Perkins? Our disability programs would be abolished pretty much if we didn't have this Carl Perkins money. And we receive a million currently and a million, this, over a million this coming year. And I just want to point this out because this has been a program which for three years in a row, a few years back, was eliminated from the president's budget to Congress. And through the actions of, of community colleges, of us being active, it was put in the back, in the budget and Congressman Millerakis and Congressman Young helped to make that happen. I just point that out because, you know, the advocacy that we do on the federal level and our participation, active participation, this board can be very, you know, we've all participated, by going to these conferences, by being part of the audience when they bring in these speakers, so they know there's people back home who care about these issues, by us contacting our congressman who's made this happen, or else we wouldn't have this program and wouldn't be helping these, the many students who get help by this Carl Perkins. So I just want to point that out. Did you have any comment on that, Dr. Law?
The $1 million is almost all personnel and I reviewed it recently and I will tell you, darn near every one of them are in direct contact with students. So that's a good thing. I mean, that's, this is not a bureaucracy sitting off on the side. And our students with disabilities are served, are counseling for workforce, so it's pretty effective expenditure.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to accept all of item B and all of item C. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Can we have a motion to approve item D, E, F, G?
I still move.
Second.
What about H?
We can do H also. Is that fine with you and Evelyn and Dick?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion on any of those points?
I think we need a second, don't we?
Dick's seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can we do I and J?
So move. Second.
My Mr. Brett, second, and my Mr. Johnston. Any discussion? Let's move to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dr. Law, item K, please.
Yes, and I'll turn it back to Doug. This is the one I mentioned to you. We'll try to make this a standing item, so give us your feedback as to what's valuable to you.
Don't, don't ever come in wearing a red suit, though.
Is this KNL?
That means a deficit.
No, this is K, L is a separate item.
Okay.
There is none.
There we go. Okay. My arrow works here. Just, I want to preface this by saying that although this is our end-of-year financial report, we, that's why we, we got this as close as we could to actually closing the books, but we're just about that far from actually closing, so there may be some minor variations, but I'll update you. Teresa assures me this is well over 90% complete.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, you should have a handout that gives you the summary of the information. I'll hit some of those highlights as we go through. This first, find my arrow here, okay? This first chart, if you, if you look at the, this blue line up here at the top, can you see that on your?
Yes.
On the front, okay? At the, that's our budget, our revenue and expense, budget numbers at the top. And so we track each month our revenue, which is the green line, and then the red is all of the expense. And you'll see that our, relative to the budget, our, our revenue was significantly above where our, I don't know why my little arrow keeps disappearing, but there we go. Our revenue was significantly above our, where we had budgeted, but our expense is just about right on. And you'll see in this last month of the year, you see it, yeah, thank you. In this last month of the year, you'll see that, you'll see it jumps up quite a bit. And that is due primarily to the, to the partial payoff, $5 million payoff of the construction loan. And we have the second half of that.
What's the fund transfer in? What, what does that mean? Is that coming from the other, the other monies we have, but in?
Yeah, it's auxiliary, some of it's auxiliary transfer in, some of it's, what, baccalaureate?
The most funded debt.
Yeah, well, this year's a little different in that this year we also, we used to do short-term loans and we had a fund, about a $900,000 fund that had been set aside to do short-term loans. Now that that has gone outside the college, we transferred that money back into Fund Ten. So it's, it's a variety of, of transfers in from other.
Doug, do you consider all your encumbrances for the year in our expenses?
Well, some of them are carried forward, I mean, into our sheet. But we, all of our encumbrances are considered not in the expense, the year-end closing, but in, carried forward into the next year, we have encumbered all that money in, if that answers exactly what you're asking.
Well, what I'm talking about is if we have a payable and it's encumbered, but it hasn't been paid, but it's an expense of this year, is that all considered in our expenses?
That's carried forward, am I right, Teresa?
The all expenses that have been accrued, that will be paid in the new year are included in the expense. The encumbrances which appear in purchase orders, which have not been yet received on, they carry forward into the future and utilize fund balance to cover them.
Okay. How much would that amount to? Because if you're utilizing fund balance, is that going to be a large amount?
Teresa, if you would come forward, please, it would be appreciated.
I just got the number yesterday. We rolled the purchase orders over and it was a little over a million.
Okay, okay. So it's not a, it's not a large figure?
No.
One million dollars is a large figure, but it's a very figure.
And they have submitted down the budget. Okay. The, the next slide gives you a little bit more detailed breakdown of our actual, of our budget revenue relative to our actual revenue and then our budgeted expense relative to our actual expense. Again, this clearly shows that our budget, that our actual revenue was significantly above what we budgeted, primarily due to, and you'll see I highlighted some, some in red on the handout that you got. Primarily, the revenue increase is due to the new technology fee and the biggest portion, over $8 million, was from increased enrollment in the credit programs for tuition. On the expense side, the personnel expenses increased pretty significantly primarily due to the adjunct, increase in adjuncts because of the increased enrollment. We also put a, a large amount of that revenue back into staff for the MAP Center, Student Services, Financial Aid, and we even carried that forward further into the, to this fiscal year's budget. The, the current expense number is primarily up due to the $5 million payment of the construction. Otherwise, that expense number would be significantly lower. But the $5 million counts for most of that. The, the end of year, after all is said and done, we're, our fund balance is about 5.2 million relative to about 2.7 million last year. We, and if, on the 10/11 budget, much of that has been, again, rolled into additional staffing due to the enrollment increase, so we, I think we've used that wisely in our, in our current fiscal year budget. Those are the highlights. Any?
When you add all the, this $5,192 to our previous fund balance, what is our fund balance?
I'm told that it will be somewhere around in $26 million.
Okay.
Give or take.
Well, I think this is extremely helpful to have this report.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, this is something we need to do every, every meeting.
All right, thank you. And we'll tell her to make it the kind of operating report that, that board members desire and need and keep our fingers on the pulse and share with everybody, you know, everybody in the audience is seeing it and that's a healthy thing, too.
Mr. Chairman, do you think with your accounting background, they can do this?
No, this is loaded.
Every, every board meeting without having to make a lot of assumptions?
Well, what, what we would do is bring you the prior month, so we would close the book, for, for August, you'll get July's month.
Well, you've been sending us a quarter.
Yeah, it's a quarter.
And I don't know, I'm just thinking of the practicality and the work that goes into trying to make a proper cutoff, because you probably have some accruals that you've got to address in order to make this.
I would assume a report like this is being generated anyway for Dr. Law each month, so I don't think this is additional work that's being done. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I, I want to meet everyone's needs here. You know, first and foremost is for you as the Board of Trustees to keep your fingers on the pulse of the finances of the organization. Quarterly is one thing, monthly is something else. Secondly, I'd really like to engage with you of where you would like us to look and where we're looking as we see things change during the year, so that we have a sense of the, the financial dynamics. And that's what I'm really trying to provide you is, the year-end, there's obviously some accounting kinds of things. The rest is really activity flow.
And the quarterly statements, a different statement. That's a complete balance sheet and income statement that you send us. So I assume that we will still get that on a quarterly basis, but this type is a management monthly report.
So next month, we would get a sense of where we are on tuition. It's going to be higher than we thought, so I want you to have a number in your head as to how much more tuition did we get than we had originally planned.
Does that sound okay to you?
Well, if it's no more work, I don't want, I don't want to burden staff down with a, with a lot of extra work, was what my purpose with that comment was.
No, we, we're pleased to do it.
And I think with the end of the stimulus money and things like that, I mean, we're looking at some challenges, so I think this is, we have to be get more engaged here. So let's go to them from L, which is.
Yes.
Yes. Companionism.
Yeah. Here we go. Somebody tee up my presentation. Thank you. I wanted to just give you a heads up that this week we received a, a communication from the key staff people. In fact, I think you, I don't know if I have copies of this for you, but I think you do. The point of it, though, is we were told to prepare for a 5% budget cut since nobody's going to do it before the election, be prepared on January 1st for the budget cut. And that plan for the budget submissions for next year at an additional 10% cut beyond that for next July 1st. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm surprised you haven't received one yet, because this goes to all agencies. Jerry McDaniel and David Colburn.
I was going to ask you for a copy of this.
I'm saying the whole deal, okay? I just excerpted the key parts. It's a lengthy communication. Okay. 5%.
Dr. Law, you're the last good news to come out of telehas.
I'm not reducing my effort by 5% or 10%, okay? I'm increasing. So just want you to know, it's real stuff. This is, this is the stuff that's coming down. Here are the, here are the numbers that you should have in your mind, I think. Our current budget from the state is 62.9 million. The reduction for this year that we have to identify is 3.15. Next year, we would have to keep our eye on 6.3. And then you see the revisions. So this is the framework we're working on. Want to be sure that, here's the part where I need to be sure we take just a minute. As we move forward, what are the values that are going to drive the decisions that we want to make as we start honing the budget to meet those, those new targets? And I would, these are just for suggestions, obviously, you know, I just want to be sure that we can communicate to everybody how we're going to approach additional budget cuts, because it's going to be snug. Keep the door open, that, that's our mission and I think everyone would do that. Protect the employment of our employee, of the SPC employees. I think it's imperative for us to send that signal as strongly as, as we can. And you see the, the work that you did to improve compensation and the staff and professional development. It's going to be tight, but let's keep this as part of a priority for our, our faculty and staff. You would expect that we protect the core academic programs.
We do like that.
The, the baccalaureate programs are, are going full tilt, but, but they're still, you know, we can't throttle back. I mean, they, they need to keep the wind at their back for a while. And then I think we'll be coming to you with even more support in the student support areas. The MAP issue is in place, it's working, we're, we're dissecting it, it needs a little more help. So I'm, that's a priority for me. I'm just trying to make sure that as, as we start honing the budget, you have a sense of what's important to us and to you and we can come back to you in those frameworks.
And I think this goes back to a question Mr. Gibbons asked earlier in the meeting about the health programs and the number of positions we have there. You know, they tend to be our most expensive programs that we have on the, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir.
I think we are, I am on that. So I mean, you get into those types of issues, too. Is, you know, can you, even though there may be demand for a program, can we afford to fund that? Because we only, we get same reimbursement per credit hour for that as we do a program where we have a lecture hall of, of a greater number of students, which we don't have in many cases.
Mr. Chair, I, this morning I talked to Doug and, and he said he could do this. And I think it'd be appropriate if we had program costing. In other words, one of the various programs really cost us and allocate out, even though we'll have to figure out the overhead, to allocate out cost. So we would know. And I just, I'm just throwing one out just for, because we heard that the nursing program this morning, there's, seems to be a little decrease in, in the need. And I know whether we follow up on, but where programs are no longer maybe in a need that are high cost, that we could address our priorities, which I believe this is what this is about. But I, for one, would want to have some, some cost analysis, and I think that's what you were saying, Mr. Chairman, that if we had that cost analysis and that could be done, that probably won't just happen tomorrow. But that would be helpful in establishing our priorities as to how we address them. Not that we're all going to be cost accountants, but that does tend to help you a little bit in, in setting your priorities if you know all the details.
And that's the dialogue we have to get ourselves into. Cost is a. Cost is a, yeah, I'm telling people who do this for a living, is a, is a term of art sometimes. And, you know, in higher education, cost is a function of the longevity of faculty. You know, it, it might not be much of a program, but, you know, that, that's what's really driving the cost. It may be some of the things that we talked about today, the cost of clinical rotations as part of that. So some of its mission, but we ought to have the cost information in front of us.
That's right, because it might change our thinking on missions. It may not, but it might.
I think that's good.
Mr. Chair, I think that the five things that you have here, Dr. Law, are very, um, are probably the things that I would say that are most critical for this college to continue to move forward, because, um, you know, our employees are important, we definitely have to keep the doors open, but our academic programs have to continue to be strong and continue to prepare students, I don't care what the economy is, or what the job market or, or what's happening in Tallahassee. And then the baccalaureate programs are, have really put us on the map. I think they're growing. I think it was a need that was met for this county and this community. And then, um, the student support programs, if we're not strong there, we're going to continue to lose students. So I, I, you know, if, if this is something that, I don't know if, if this was the reason that you brought it, is this your five key things? I would say these are probably our five key tasks that we need to be focused on in tight times. I would agree with you on that. As far as the cost and other things, you know, you really have to, I believe in, I said this before, noses in, fingers out. I really believe you have to develop that with your staff and bring it to us, because you're the, you're the professional in, in this area of the world, so, um, I think these five key things are, are critical.
Any more to respond to?
No, I appreciate the guidance, exactly. I want to, I, I feel the need to move on, because I want you to know, we're not at the edge yet, okay? The, the good work that preceded me has us in really good stead today, so I, I don't want us to feel like, you know, next month is a list of cuts and imminent. I mean, there's a lot of anticipation, Dr. Furlong and the staff. So if we're looking for 3.15, um, you know, tuition estimate, we're running, don't, do not quote me, we're, we're above double-digit growth, let me put it that way, okay? The budget anticipated tuition revenue growth of only 2%. So there is tuition revenue that's going to help us get through some of the tough part, and that becomes recurring dollars, by the way. We shouldn't anticipate they'll go away next year. So we would anticipate that we would take some $2 million from the tuition growth. We'll give an update on the whole picture of that. This institution already had a general contingency in anticipation that there might be a mid-year cut, and there was $4.4 million put aside. So for today, we would identify a little over $1 million from that contingency. And that would get us our 3.15. Let me just make one of, oh, hold on. We will bring you a plan, though, you know, if, when they cut once, the history in Florida is, they don't just cut once.
No.
So we will bring you a plan by October or November, if we had to cut 7.5 out of this year's budget and 7.5 out of next year's budget. So, so we're not trying to just declare victory today, but I want to keep everybody's anxieties in, in check while we're, the good work that went before us, we ought to cash in on that now. Keep moving forward, identify where we're headed for, okay? I did want to indicate to you that this, those cuts, yes, I, this is the last of the good news. Those cuts are in addition to the stimulus money going away. Once again, let me offer my compliments and thanks. The institution had anticipated that. So while we are spending the stimulus money, we actually have recurring revenue that could address those recurring costs, but I think we're all on the page that says you have to spend the stimulus money while you've got it, okay? And that allows us then to pay back the loans, do some other things through fund balance, because our money is saved and their money is spent. So stimulus, we're okay on, we can hope there might be more, we don't know what that's going to look like. Last piece, and then I'll certainly hush the, as I mentioned, we'll bring you a plan if we had to get to 7.5% this year, and then by the February board meeting, we would have our first workshop on next year's board. We'll know a little more when they get back in January, things will start shaping up then. So for today, I want you to understand that the staff is mindful of it, your good work before has put us in really good stead. We're going to keep on keeping on. None of the strategic priorities are in jeopardy right now, there's still money in a contingency for strategic initiatives. So I appreciate everybody's good, good help there. That's where we are, so you will see.
That's an important report, and thank you, Dr. Law. I think that's an important agenda item you've added to our agenda, and we should address at each meeting.
Good.
Almost every economist out there is predicting a very slow, slow recovery. In a way, as far as with budgeting purposes, that helps us in budgeting purpose, it's easier to budget for a slow economy than, or a slow increase than something that's going like this. And, and, but enrollment will eventually, as recovery starts, enrollment will drop. So I mean, we have to be, you know, obviously be, be careful about that, too, because that will affect our, our income, so. And who knows how much ripple effect with other cuts in the state budget where people won't, um, be able to come to college for whatever reason. So a lot of factors out there. We've already covered item M, and now we'll move to the President's report and the national leadership opportunity, which is exciting.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. You know, every, every president has invested some sort of, there's extra energies in, in some things, and for many years, I didn't spend much time on accreditation and assessment. It's, um, there are other things to do. It is the only discussion right now at the national levels and elsewhere. The feds are driving it, the state is driving it, the accrediting bodies are driving it. It is the only discussion. In fact, I leave this meeting to fly to Washington. I have a spot on the Executive Committee for the Voluntary Framework for Accreditation on AACC, where we're trying to change the, the guidance for accreditation. So it's, we've invested a lot of time. The most important thing for-
This is tied to the completion.
It's the whole, yes, it is. The accrediting agencies have moved the goalposts, so great institutions like ours, and I've, you know, I'm thinking ones that I've been associated with throughout my career, have always been strong in accreditation, and now the feds and the accrediting bodies are saying, you have to kick it up several notches. We have to be able to demonstrate what students learned. Demonstrate, not talk about how many As and how many Bs. Demonstrate what students learned. It's a big challenge, big challenge for staff. As I have been telling everybody, accreditation now comes all the way to the classroom. Along the way, everybody's trying to figure out how to keep the feds from getting overbearing on this issue, and, and even our Margaret Spelling Commission had, had tried to do some things, literally trying to get student-level data to, to talk about how students complete and all those sorts of things. All the powers that be said, let us revise it, let us come back. We're now in the comeback stage. A group that was formed to address this was the New Leadership Alliance, and in fact, I noticed it was a Scrivvings era, when I cut it and pasted, and ended up putting everybody into American Council of Education. But would you just take one and pass it on? Long and short is, we have been invited into a pilot project that I think has as likely a chance of being the real thing a year, two years from now as anything I've heard. The way to parallel your thinking is, just as we have seen ourselves with certifications for green buildings, or certifications in the ISO series for manufacturing, there would be a certification process that is a much more dynamic way of showing your assessment and your accreditation and those kinds of things. We've been invited into the pilot project, we will get access to the best names in America on this topic. We will be, you know, there's, we'll be at the leading edge and the bleeding edge. I mean, that's, they go together sometimes, but I think this institution is, is worthy of that, and certainly, it's going to happen, and I'd rather have us driving it rather than waiting to read the reports and then having to implement that. So we've vetted it through all of the staff, and we think we, we see the edges of this, and we'll, you know, as, as it unfolds, we'll keep you informed, but it's a nice opportunity. It has my hearty recommendation, but happy to have your questions.
Well, I think you have the board's full support on this. Terry?
I support this 100%. I think this is a great opportunity. When I was reading your memo, the first bullet that you have on here for the benefits, and I'm thinking about your arrival here at St. Pete College, and I'm thinking about some of the endeavors that we have been on over the last number of years, that, it's just a great occasion with your new leadership, this first bullet, for us to refocus and integrate SPC's core mission as a teaching and learning institution. And that's the number one goal. And I think it's, the timing is perfect with you to be able to be here to put your imprint on this and, and get it going. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And, and Dr. Law, I'm sure you saw the article in the St. Pete Times, it was a New York Times story, I think it was this past week, maybe it was even longer, so, with the attack on the, uh, the stimulus money is going for job training, and, you know, so, and this ties into exactly what, what you're going to be doing here. And Jane Oats, the Under-Secretary of Labor, gave a good response on that, which I was glad to see. And I was glad to see community colleges were not in the story, but in a indirect way, we were. And so you see, there's a lot of outside scrutiny on, on what you're doing here.
When the accrediting bodies show up five years from now, it will be a very different process than we've seen previously. So I, I think investing our time and talent in how that process unfolds is worth the, the investment. Thank you, I appreciate that, that guidance. I have, I have one or two other items that, if I could, Mr. Chairman, in my report, okay? When I interviewed with, with this board, I indicated to you that, I forget who asked the question, but I indicated I would use the, the first few months to put together a learning plan. And I have, this will go live this week, you'll have a chance to click it, see. It is simply a SharePoint site where everyone I'm talking to will be listed, the, the tools that I'm putting together, the, the, how it works, and this will then allow me to put everything in one place. People can, as you see, communicate directly with me on this. And then in September, I'll bring you a summary of what I have learned in 90 days or less, and we can use that as a roadmap for going forward. I hope it stays in place after that, but I, I think now, we've already started loading documents, it's, it really will go live probably early next week, I'm out of town. So we did follow through on that one, and we look forward to that. Let me just give you an, an early heads up. August 19th is the faculty welcome back, and I would very much like for the board members to be there that morning as we sort of position me with the institution and talk about how we're going to approach this, and we're going to put a lot of energy into it, probably 500 or 600 people. Somebody tell me where we do this, the Coliseum downtown. I'll get you a, we'll, we'll make sure you have the details, but August 19th, we're confirmed on that. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the, the oil seminars, the public series. That is, it was very well received. It's a three-part series, but it is our effort to start the ball rolling on the Public Policy Institute. Monies have been appropriated for this institution some years back. It has had a couple of stops and starts. We now are putting together a real institute approach. The, the oil crisis was more important than waiting until we had the right name and the right budget. There's, there's plenty of money to do this. So we have three events planned. We had the one that's already taking place, August 18th is the next one, and then there's one on Saturday, October 2nd, a three-series event on the oil crisis as it unfolds, and it is our first venture with an institute. We'll be the whole institute planned probably about the same time.
Lot of favorable publicity.
Well, I appreciate that. Jim and Representative Long is, is here, and we shifted some of her duties away from international education to some of that, and she's, she has, she's been given that great leadership, and certainly, I think we ought to allow for Dennis Jones. We don't really care for his legislative papers, we just want his rolodex. That's the only thing that's of real value, so if we could do that. That's my report, sir.
Actually, Betsy's the, great report, and, um, once again, the board shows, I'll compliment us, we showed great wisdom in the hiring of Dr. Law. So, thank you. I have several items. First of all, I want to thank the provost for those reports, and I also want to thank the provost for their involvement in community. That is just so vital. Your, your integration with whatever city that you're a part of, and making sure that the city leaders know who you are, know what we're doing. I, I just had a conversation with the city manager of Clearwater, and he, and, and I brought up the college, it was non-college matters, but I brought up the college and just what we're doing. He goes, "Oh, yes, Stan Vindito always keeps me informed of what's going on, on there." And I felt good hearing that. And that's the type of thing which is just so important, and, and I really appreciate the efforts you all make on that. Those, those pay great dividends, and Dr. Law, they spend a lot of time on that, on that stuff, and, and with the chambers of commerce, and the city council meetings and all that, and it really is a, is a great part of what the provosts do with here at St. Pete College, and I want to let you know, I, I really appreciate, the board really appreciates it. The other item, I would like the board not to talk about this meeting, but just put as a food for thought for a future meeting. You know, at one time, this board engaged the other partners in joint meetings, and we have not had, done this in quite a while. And I think it's important for a lot of reasons. I think it's important symbolically, I think it forces agenda items that we, that we have common interest in, and so I would like to take a look, and I'm not saying doing this in the next year, these could be spread out next two years, but the school board, it's probably been five years since we've met with the school board. We instituted, we initiated a meeting, and then we never followed through with another year, with the USF Board of Trustees for the St. Pete campus.
Okay.
They hosted us the first time, we were supposed to return the favor, and seven years later, they're probably still waiting for the invitation. But that, but that's something I, I would hope that, that we consider having, and this doesn't need, this could be an off-board meeting thing, this is not replacing our board meeting, but we, you know, I think this group is willing to give of our time to come do a, but I think the USF St. Pete, we talked about the downtown campus and midtown, and I didn't say anything, but gosh, we don't, should we look at USF and say, do you all have any downtime where we can, you know, you know, maybe some joint areas there? I know at one time, they had problems filling up their dorm, and we've really never carried through whether St. Pete College students, or maybe we have, St. Pete College students can, can, can use their, their dorm rooms down there. The same with the Board of County Commission, with economic development, and we're the economic development engine to me in this, in this, we've not, we've not met with them in a long, long, long time. So I would just like to put those on the agenda for whenever they can possibly happen, not forcing additional work, but just saying, you know, that's something where we have a lot of common agendas, and I think it brings those agendas to the forefront when you meet, if the meetings force those items to be discussed. And maybe there could be some preliminary work on, some type of report on where we work together and, and how we can make things happen. Debra?
Mr. Chair, really quickly, I would also like to figure out how we can appreciate, show our appreciation to not just the folks that work for us, like Representative Long and Senator Jones, but what would we have done all these years without a Villaracus being in Congress, or a Young being in Congress? So I want to figure out how we can thank them, you know, those folks, as well as the people that are still serving, that help us. As a board, I think we need to engage that a little bit more and say thank you to them so we can figure out. Going forward, we're going to have some tough budget times, so we better make sure our relationships are forged and very strong. And if those folks weren't there all these years, we would have probably been in trouble as a college. And finally, on July 30th, I'm going to be going to Tallahassee, because Tallahassee Community College is doing a, having a celebration of the legacy of Dr. Bill Law. Tallahassee Community College is doing that, so I'm going to go to that, but I'm only going, Mr. Chair, to make sure that he comes back, because I don't want him staying there. We need him to get back here and get back to work, so I think that is phenomenal and great, and it speaks to the work that he's done in Tallahassee at that college. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, Debra, it is, I don't know, too many colleges that have a president leave for another college and name something for them. I mean, I think that's, that, that shows something about Dr. Law.
Well, let's name something now, so we don't know.
This is the first building in Tallahassee not named after TK Weatherall. Particularly rewarding. Or Bobby Bowden.
That is really funny. And the last item I have is, we are, during the hiring of the new president, one of the things which was, you know, this board learned a lot, and we learned a lot in a lot of different ways, but we, we heard from our faculty probably more strongly than we ever have since I've been on the board since 1999. strongly than we ever have since I've been on the board since 1999 about concerns they have. And I don't want to forget those concerns, that we've hired a new president, okay, those concerns are now over. Well, they're not. And I would like sometime on your radar, and this will be, I'm sure, several months from now, but a workshop on the issues that they brought up, especially the moving along the salary scale. And I know we have budget concerns, but this is, I don't think the two are related. I think we come up with a fair program and approve that program so that there is some type of, you know, acceptance within the faculty using the senate organization or whatever other structure to make sure that there's, you know, you're not going to please 100% because no one gets 100% in anything. But if the representative body comes up with some type of agreement with you on how they move through the scale, because that seemed tremendous frustration, which constantly got brought up. And also, the percentage of load issue for retired faculty to come back and teach. And those types of issues which were brought up, I would just like some type of workshop, so we know. And this board has such limited knowledge on those items, other than what we heard. And then the emeritus program. To me, it seems simple to keep it, you know, and nothing's simple in academics. But why not have a criteria, if you fit the criteria, and it's not some type of--